Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
All right, do I have an adoption of tonight's agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oral communications, so if anyone wants to speak before the council on a matter that's not on tonight's agenda, come on up, or not we'll keep moving along. All right. So, tonight we're, we have a, we have several workshops, and I think Ted, you're the guy to present the staff report to us. So, first, we're gonna look at accepting a report on a Brisbane Marina infrastructure maintenance plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As you can see, the plan is two parts, and I want to thank, first of all, all the council members that came out to the marina several months ago to tour and see firsthand the work that needs to be done specifically identified in the infrastructure maintenance plan as Phase One. We didn't talk too much about Phase Two, because I thought Phase One was much more important, but nevertheless, Phase Two is also equally important. But Phase One really addresses the backbone of the structure of the floating dock system. It's also worth mentioning that I walked and measured for the estimated supplies that's within your report, there's 30,000 linear feet of marina dock space. It took me two weeks to do it. So, the estimates for the materials is gonna be fairly precise. The estimates for the labor, as shown in the task work, is not gonna be so precise. The reason for that is the values with respect to the amount of work that the job entails is heavy labor. It's two burly men with big wrenches and big, heavy tools and big saws. As I explained to those of you who came out, this is, this is hard work. It's not difficult work, it's not complex work, but it is work that requires a lot of physical strength to get done. The other thing is that with the task work, we need to take into consideration the weather. If we have employees that are doing the work, their vacation time, sick leave, and other interruptions to that labor, and so that's why you have kind of a minimum of a maximum that I provided for you. It was my best guess effort, looking at the task at hand, to kind of understand what two guys would take to get the work done. Obviously, when you start a large project such as I've unveiled for you here in this plan, when you start at one end, two skilled guys are gonna take a little longer at first to do the job until they get towards the end, when a rhythm between working with one another gets more into sync, and they get more used to the tools and the, and the equipment that they're working with, and I would hope that at the end, they would be working much, much faster than originally at the very beginning. So, having said all that, I'd like to start with the first slide, which is, I think we need to go over parts of docks. I think it would be helpful for the members in the audience specifically, but I think I spoke to you and gave you a lot of dock techno-speak when you came out. The dock on the screen is a typical dock. It's got concrete flotation. It's held together with what we call wooden whalers, and that's the wood pieces on the side that are also held together with what we call through-hauls or through-rods, through-bolts. Generally, those things are kind of rusty. That is a whaler right there, and through-rods-
We can't see your laser.
I'm sorry. And, and the through-rods would be the little dots right in there, a little dot right there. Those are the through-rods. What it takes is it takes two guys on either side, or gals, with big wrenches, sometimes a cutting torch or a heating torch, to get those rusty old bolts off. Generally, what happens is the wood becomes old and rotten over time. Also, the movement of the tides and just the weather conditions and the marine environment, the wood starts to kind of move, if you will, and it gets out of round, and what generally ends up happening is those floats become misaligned. And if they're allowed to misalign, then what they end up doing is, and I'll show you on a later slide, what they'll end up doing is drooping in certain sections, or there actually be tipping. Also, in this slide here, we show three pilings. The things that hold the pilings together with the floating dock surfaces are called piling keepers. There's one there, one there, and there's one on the end. The piling keepers here are internal. The one on the end is an external piling keeper, and I'll go into a lot of detail when we get to Phase Two about repairs made to those. This is a picture of a slide of one of those drooping sections. What's happened is the whaler wood on all three sides have become old. It's starting to fail, and you can see where the end of the dock is actually drooping into the water. If that's allowed to continue to occur, what happens is that concrete billet, as we call it, gets waterlogged, and it starts to create more weight to it and goes down even further. Now, that can be stopped simply by replacing all of the lumber along here and, and the old through-rods, and basically doing something very simple as realigning the dock. And what they do is they realign the dock sections that are floating with barrels full of water, and they use a simple carpenter's level to get it level. Once it's level, they gingerly walk out there after they've cut all the new wood and placed all the new through-rods through, and they simply go around and they tighten everything down. This is something we've, we did when we had a full-time maintenance guy on basically a routine basis, and you can see when you walk down some of the docks where some of those repairs have been made. Some of my part-time guys have done that to the headwok at the beginning of Dock Three, where you can see where they, where they, they made that repair as well. Took them a few days to do it, because one of the problems I have with part-time personnel is I have people that come in in the morning, I have people that come in in the afternoon, and wherever they can overlap their work, we try to schedule that so that they can get that work completed. With 580 berths, the reason this is important is we haven't been doing this kind of work for three years. That's when Mark Chappell left. Unfortunately, it's starting to show in a lot of locations where that's beginning to happen. And those of you that took the tour with me, we were on Dock One because Dock One is most exposed to the elements. Strangely enough, even though we have storms in the wintertime that come out of the northwest, they tend to blow around the end of San Bruno Mountain through the San Bruno Notch, and actually come out of the southeast from, in, right into the marina entrance from the south there. And the wave chop and the winds are very, very harsh on the wood. They actually accelerate the corrosion of the through-bolts and the degradation of, of the wood itself, and including the piling keepers, which we'll, we'll get to in another segment. But I, I kind of wanted to get to the basis of what Phase One is all about. This system's 30 years old. The time to do this kind of work is now rather than later. What it will buy is probably 10 to 20 more years worth of useful life, perhaps more. As I spoke to you when we did the tours, the seawall itself was built 30 years ago, and at the time, it was meant to be a 50-year seawall. Well, I've been in contact with several marine engineers, and they tell me that the seawall could be 100-year seawall, as long as we don't have any seismic events, or if a large boat runs into it. In some areas, we do have some settling of the seawall, but basically, my message here tonight is, the seawall is not a worry, and I wouldn't consider it to be a worry until such time as some event like that happened. Unfortunately, these kinds of events here are events that are occurring just as a, a result of natural aging of the marina itself. What you can see within my detailed work for Dock One, Two, and Three is that I've actually broken out and measured the type of lumber that we're gonna need to replace in certain sections that I've identified, both three-by-eights, two-by-eights. I've got, unfortunately, terminology, such things as eight Dawson bullnose cleats. They have different names for them. Our industry is unusual in that we name things after people, like Max. There's one in here named Bob. There's a Bob cleat, and that's a smaller cleat. Those are all specific to certain sizes of-
There was somebody called Bullnose?
There, yeah. And a bulldozer is a type of cleat.
Bob Bullnose.
Anyway, I've also estimated the amount of through-rods and hardware that will be required, along with sort of the finishing work that we speak of, like rubber rail and that kind of stuff. So, that actually was a fa- a fairly laborious amount of detail that I took to do that, but that plan, for, for the greater extent, is something when you walk on the docks, you can actually see it. I've taken a tape measure, and I, and I've determined those areas, and I've, and I've charted them out. One of the typical tasks, which is why this takes some time, is you can see that you have two boats in your slide. In order to get the work to get those through-rods through, you have to move those two bolts out of the way in order to affect that work. The other thing is that make it more expedient if we had a small, low boat, such as a Boston Whaler, to be able to be on the water side, for one guy maybe pounding one of the through-bolts through on one side, and the other guy sort of accepting it as it comes through the other way. We have to remove the old stubborn rods and bolts. You take a sawzall to cut out the old wood sections and basically splice in the new wood, which means you gotta re-drill all the new holes. They have to line up precisely, so it does take some people with skill in order to, to do that. Then, what you do is, once you put everything together, as I explained earlier in a little more detail, is you put the, the water barrels on the dock, fill them with water, watch your bubble level, and then go around and gingerly tighten everything down. Then, they have to measure and cut the rubber rail, which is that white rubber stuff that you see just to the top that goes around there. That is time-consuming as well. They have to attach the corners. Then, they demobilize all the equipment that they've had to bring down on the dock, all the debris and stuff, clean all that up, move it off the dock, and then they have to move the boats back. So, I factored all those tasks in when I estimated two full-time equivalents, which shows Dock One, Dock Two, Dock Three. You can see that Dock One is taking the most amount of time, because we have the most amount of damage and we need the most amount of work there. Dock Two, since we're getting further away from the entrance, goes to 60 days. Dock Three's in pretty good shape, where I've estimated 14 days. But then, we get back up to 30 days for Dock Four, and Dock Five, which is one of the bigger docks, meaning there's more fingers there, we're back up to 60 days. And fortunately for Dock Six, that's a, that's a little guy, it's got smaller fingers, there's very little damage. It's worn very, very well over the last 30 years. Fortunately, there's no big boats that are really tied off to it, and it doesn't get the brunt of our storms. So, Dock Six is really the dock that's in, in, in best shape at, at this point. Again, the cost of hiring two full-time equivalents to complete this, estimated about two years of work time, is about 106,000 bucks a year for, for one maintenance marina worker, so you're looking at about $212,000 plus parts. It's probably gonna be a little more than that, or maybe a little less than that. And when we get to the 15-year capital improvement plan, some of these numbers are wrapped up into that, and I will re-reference that when we get to that portion of it, based on, based on our report here tonight. So, basically, I wanted to outline for you the, the issues that we have with the docks, and now we'll go over some parts. This is what I call a gusset. It's a piece of plywood, and basically, what a gusset does is it spans two concrete floating sections. In this particular case, what you're looking at is you're looking at a finger adjoining a headwok. The headwoks are the main walkways. The fingers are where the boats tie up alongside of. This is a typical gusset. All gussets within the marina usually are either blank like this one, meaning that there's no dock box on top of it, or they support a dock box and a utility box as well. That is what's considered a main headwok gusset, and you can see a little bit off to the right where you have a piling keeper right here. These are just pieces of plywood. They need to be redone. That one is in, not bad to shape, but if it continues to deteriorate, it would become a trip hazard, and therefore, a fall hazard, and there's nothing worse than tripping on a piece of plywood and landing on a piece of concrete.
Or in the water.
Or in the water.
Or in the water. I think I'd rather land in the water than on the concrete, quite frankly. It's easier to dry off than it is to get tripped at the emergency room.
Depends on whether you swallow or not.
This is a typical piling keeper gusset, and these are the piling rollers that you'll read later on in, in Phase Two, and the cars, they call them cars, are the, the little brackets that hold the rollers in place. You can see opposite, there's a gusset with a dock box and utility box on it. This one is on Dock One, and you can see, these are the whalers, and the whalers actually go past the headwok to adjoin both the finger to the headwok and the floating sections along the finger as well. This is a picture of one where one of the through-rods has failed. It's corroded through, it's on Dock One, and it's in the splash zone, and what's ended up happening is once the through-rod, which is, there's one here, and there's one here, the one here has failed. And what happens when that fails is, you can see, the flotation is starting to move to the opposite side of where the through-rod has failed, and what it's doing is the weight of it is shifting it over here, and the movement of the docks is starting to crack the gusset right there. And what needs to happen is this whole gusset section needs to come out, this part, portion needs to come out, and we need to replace the through-rods this way and this way, and that's a fairly big job. And I'll show you some repairs that we've done. This is the cutting of a gusset board that's gonna go in to replace the piling gusset. And this is a typical replacement on Dock One of, of a gusset with utilities and a dock box taken out. This is kind of your basic anatomy of a dock here. This is a piling gusset repair. You can see they've done both sides. They're doing this side, and they're doing the other side, along with the section in the middle. Now, one of the things I'd like to talk about here is, the, the kind of work for this particular finger through-rods requires me really to hire a marine contractor. Marine contractors are very specialized in that they come in with diving equipment, as well as boats, to access this finger, and they will get up underneath the dock to cut out the old through-rods. I would never expect our maintenance folks to have that level of skill. The other problem-
Or equipment.
Or equipment. And the other problem, and it really is a problem, is that any construction work done over the water in California, or actually in the United States for that matter, falls under the Jones Act. And anything under the Jones Act and the, a longshoreman's union requires that these guys have a level of insurance that is beyond magnification. This repair here costs us $12,000 just for those two things. It only took them three days to complete the work, so it's very, very expensive to bring in marine contractors. I can't even bring in a regular contractor. A regular contractor that is knowledgeable of the Jones Act will turn the work down, knowing that they're subject to issues with the state of California and their contractor's license. So, that's why this work is very, very specialized. On the other hand, with the simple work between the floating dock sections that we looked at earlier, two guys could simply do that work. When you get to the kind of problems that we have when they're meeting the headwok, is gonna require specialized contractor work. Unfortunately, there's only a handful of contractors in the San Francisco Bay that even do this work, and scheduling this work was very, very difficult, and I had to wait months for them to get in. Obviously, my phone is ringing off the hook going, "Do you know that this dock is broken?" "Oh, yeah, I know the dock's broken." And I had to wait around for, in this particular case, it was Bu Stad Construction out of Alameda to basically clear their schedule to come over to do the work for me. So, basically, that, that ends the slideshow portion of this, and I, I think with respect to the Phase One portion of it, I think things are pretty straightforward, and I think I communicated and articulated well enough to council when you guys made the visit to the marina, kind of what needs to be done. So, at this point, before I jump into Phase Two, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Any questions?
Yes. Thank you. I'm, I'm glad that I took the tour, because I understand what you're talking about with all these funny names, but the price estimates that you have put over here considers today's cost.
That's correct.
So, if we wait another year as the economy picks up or whatever, this could even be greater.
That's correct. Yes, and also if the price of steel goes up.
That's-
I mean, a lot of these cleats and the through-rods and all that stuff, you know, they, they price that stuff not only for, for whatever the demand in the, in the industry is, but also whatever the cost of the steel. And, and same with the lumber. The lumber is also based on the estimates that I got from Sierra Point Lumber, and of course, they gave us the, the preferred government rate, but that is also sub- subject to adjustment as well.
Right.
So, you're absolutely correct. These are today's numbers.
So, the labor, based on what we have, 212,000 plus supplies, 40, that's 252,000. And plus, we have to have contractors to do the cutting of the pile that, what was it, that piling roller, um, piling-
Well, we only, we only need the contractors really in a couple of only specialized areas.
Right, but still, that's a cost, what, additional, 15, 20, 30,000?
Yeah.
So, that's what I'm trying-
That's a good number, 15 to 30,000, because I've still got a few out there that have yet to be done.
So, that would be 283,000, 282,000 approximately.
Right.
No, I think, I think the labor is 424 for two-
Correct.
People for two years.
Right.
So, it's 424, not 212.
Oh, that was just for one year.
Yeah, one year, two people is 212, so for two years-
And we have two years, two people-
424.
Is really 424.
I was just counting it for one, one.
But for Phase One, it's 424 as the labor.
Yes, yes, yes.
For two years.
Two years, two people.
Two years, two people. And I know Clark loves to do that.
You do what?
To, to repair this. I heard you're good at it.
Any other questions, Kathy?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other council questions?
This is, wow.
Thank you for explaining why we can't just hire a contractor to come out and do this. Although, if it's not the through-rods that are on the fingers to the dock, one could assume that we wouldn't be in violation of the Jones Act having a contractor, rather than hiring our own.
Well, if there, if there are our own people, we don't have to be beholden to the Jones Act. I don't like to say it like that, but it's true.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, even on the Phase One replacing of the gussets, we still, if we hired a contractor for that, that would be subject to the Jones Act?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Absolutely. Any, any work done over the water.
Anything.
Anything on the docks.
So, it doesn't matter if you're in the water.
Right.
It's over the water.
Correct.
So, anything in the marina?
So, if the person's an employee, then you're not subject to the Jones Act.
No.
But if you hire that person, you are.
Well, that makes sense why we would need to hire them in that case. But my other question is, because it's so time-consuming to move the boats out and bring in the equipment and isolate the dock area for safety, wouldn't it make more sense to try to do the Phase One and Phase Two, where we're working on the same general pilings with the, the rollers and the whalers? Wouldn't it make more sense to just move those boats once and do those at one time? And I think that could significantly reduce the labor time that we would need. And then, as a separate question, on the days that we have either a weather issue or vacation, sick time, sometimes when there's not gonna be the two guys that can go out and work on this project, is there other maintenance that those workers would be able to do in those downtimes from working on the project that would be beneficial to the marina?
Absolutely. Let me answer the first part of your question. To get my head around this whole thing, I had to kind of focus really on, on the Phase One portion first, even though when I was measuring out the Phase One portion, I could see the ends of the piling fingers that would need to be addressed, but I thought at the time, to not confuse that and to keep things at least simple for me, was to break it out. It was easier to go back around and then count the number of piling keepers that needed to be addressed, the number of gussets that needed to be addressed, but quite certainly, once they started the work on a finger that needed the whaler work, it would make sense at that time to go ahead and then do the piling keepers and do the gussets at the same time. Since you're there anyway, and you have the equipment there anyway, that makes total-
And the boats are moved out.
It's just in my report, I had to separate them out to keep things simple for me.
Okay. So, we may have actually a reduction in estimated time if we were able to-
Sure.
Initiate and prioritize Phase One with Phase Two work where it was needed.
Yeah, and you're gonna have that savings with those fingers that we looked at on Dock One, because every one of those piling keepers on every one of those fingers that's, that's affected, needs to be replaced. And when I went back, I counted them all, and I had that very thought, oh, yeah, if they ever got down to doing the work here, they'll, they're just, while they're tearing out all the wood, they'd just be tearing out that piling keeper at the same time. It makes sense to do that at that time.
Thank you.
Yeah. And the second part of your question was, had to do with, oh, it had to do with savings. And yeah, there would be a savings. The other thing is if, when we get into Phase Two, you can see that there's only one full-time equivalent, so for some reason, one worker wasn't there. That doesn't mean they couldn't go on and continue completing the work, because one worker can do the piling ring, one worker could work on the gusset, one worker could work on a dock box utility gusset in the absence of a second worker helper.
Great. And, and if they did have downtime during the first phase, or when they were working on that specific type of thing, they would have other duties-
We got plenty of work.
Around the marina to complete.
We're like the bridge, we got plenty of work to do.
Ray, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Well, first, I really appreciate this detailed, urgent maintenance issues at the marina, because I, I've been concerned about this for some time, and I know a number of boat owners and constituents are very concerned about it, because they see the problems. And I've heard about it, and I've seen it, thanks to your tour, so I'm really pleased that we're, you know, about to address this. I guess the, the other question that I have is, clearly, this is an immediate, urgent need to fix these things, but there, as you just mentioned, there are lots of other things that are needing constant maintenance. Do you see that the, the current amount that you're spending on that is sufficient to keep up, or, or do we need to have an additional amount on, on, not just for a couple of years to do this urgent maintenance, but also to keep up with all the recurring maintenance?
I, I think now is the time to get ahead of the curve before you get behind the curve, because the repairs that we've seen that need to be made, that I still have $30,000 or what have you left to do, really needs to start pretty much right away, because if, if it gets too far, and it gets too far gone, and you have to end up replacing one of these floatations-
That's very expensive.
Yeah.
$42,000, and you can unload it off the truck.
Right.
Yeah. And they get, and you can see, most of the docks either have two sections, three sections, or four sections of those. You start doing the math on that, it adds up to millions really quickly. Yeah. And I'll, I'll, I'll address it also in the 15-year plan.
Okay.
But in, in, in case the council decided to not move ahead, I put flotation costs only into years 16, 17, anticipating that if this work didn't get done, those floatations would fail, and they would need to be replaced, and so I've actually put it into the 15-year capital improvement plan, so you can kind of look at it both ways. You know, on one hand, you're spending the money here, or you're spending it further out into the future without the labor consideration. And we can get into that discussion when I get to the 15-year-
Okay.
-capital improvement project.
Thanks.
All right, Clark?
You know, I, you know, I've been talking with Ted about this for a couple of years now, so I'm, I'm pretty well aware of what's going on out at the marina, and really, it's a call, I think Clay and I have had this conversation too a few times through the years, and, and it really comes down to is, we pay a certain amount now, or we pay much more later.
Much more later, yeah.
And that's really gonna be it, so it's gonna be kind of one of those calls, you know, just kind of how we've been dealing with the budget, and so I guess the question here is to accept a report, and I guess if we do that with a motion, is just saying that we accept it, or, you know, and that we're accepting it, but we're not making any decision on action.
Yeah, well, that, that, as I understand, that's the nature of a workshop.
Right.
We're just getting informed, and of course, you're given opinions too, obviously, in the process, but you can get a read on it, but we're not making a motion of action.
Right.
No, but the only-
We are, we are, I think we're pretty positive about the, the need to-
I just wanted, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I think it would be appropriate and, and helpful tonight, is that if you are directing us to move forward with this, to make, you can make a motion to that effect, and we will bring it back to your next agenda, or, or, agenda fairly soon, if not next Monday, the following Monday, because the lead time to-
How year?
Hire people, you know, if we start now, we're probably talking about the end of the year or the first part of next year, so we have a lead period of time to, to get this implemented.
And, and the money that, that would go to cover this, where would it-
Well, we're, we're gonna get into that in much more detail in Stuart's report here.
So, it's okay to make that motion now without addressing-
If you wanna wait till the end of the workshop, that's fine.
Yeah, why don't we wait till the end of the workshop, then we have everything all in place. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I'll give you a little detail over Phase- Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I'll give you a little detail over Phase Two. That was Phase One. Phase Two, I identified the piling keepers that Councilmember O'Connell spoke about. We've got 15 piling keepers, 100 piling rollers, 55 piling gussets, and 77 usual regular gussets that we pointed out that need to be replaced as well. And in your report, the materials are about $7,500, $8,000. The amount of time again, is again relocating boats. You know, for instance, the piling keeper is remove the rollers and the axle, remove the stubborn attachment points, because all these things are corroded together, dig out the gusset wood, prep the keeper bed, measure and cut new wood, paint and coat all surfaces, put the new wood in place. And this is what one single individual could do by themselves. You know, drill the new holes, bolt it down, put it all back together, re-tie the boats. You know, those are time-consuming.
Just starting on page four, page two, just to be clear.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We're actually on page five, at the bottom of your sheet.
Okay. It says Phase Two on page.
Four.
Four. At the beginning.
Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, that's the component portion of it. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead to page five.
Okay.
Yeah. But my description of the task is, is on page five for that particular task. Then on page six, is a typical gusset replacement with a dock box. And again, we sort of go through those same steps again, where it's taking a lot of stuff apart and putting a lot of stuff back together. And for one of these, anywhere from three to five days. And again, it's taking into effect interruptions, weather, that kind of thing. I would, I will only tell you what I know and not what I think. But what I know is we get more work done on the docks, usually in the spring, summer, and fall months than we do in the wintertime. Because the weather is so inclement in the wintertime, it's, it's very difficult for the guys, even with rain slickers on, to be out there working on the docks. And it's in kind of a not-safe situation. They could do the work in the rain. When I worked in Santa Cruz, we used to have full crews out there and, you know, gale-force winds working on docks. But every once in a while, one of them fall in the water. It's not necessarily a safe thing, so.
Not using power tools either.
No.
Electrical, water there, you get knocked off and fall in, man, you get real trouble.
Right. And they tend to get a lot more work done in better weather than in more inclement weather. However, that's not to say that the work can't continue. The gussets need to be cut, they need to be prepped. A lot of this stuff can happen in a shop before they actually get it on the dock. And what they can do is, I, I used to have Mark in the wintertime, cut a number of these gussets, and then coat them, and then hang them in Fort Apache. And then when the weather was good, it was like, go out, dig up the, the old ones and, and put in the new ones. And so there's, work doesn't have to necessarily be lost, but it just tends to sort of slow it down.
That would have been my question. If we start the process now and hire them in January, what are they going to do until spring? So two maintenance workers would be able to have all these.
Cut a lot of wood. And then on page seven is.
It also depends on the weather.
Yes.
We have a drought. Yeah, it's not going to be raining at all, you know.
Right, right.
So it depends.
You know, and obviously, on, on page seven, you'll see that the simple gusset replacement, one that doesn't have a dock box or utility on it, or one such as on the headwok, that's a square one adjacent to a piling keeper, is, is a lot easier to do. It's a lot more straightforward, it's a lot simpler. And then on page eight is replacing the piling rollers. And those are little things that sit in a car, they have an axle that go through them with a little cotter pin. Unfortunately, that stuff gets bound up as well. And we can actually adjust the cars on the dock, they're, they're meant to do that. But again, we're talking big, heavy wrenches and stuff, and moving around, and pry bars, and that kind of stuff to, to replace them. Because the rollers wear, just like your automobile tires. If they're up against a harsh surface, as Councilmember Conway knows, you just wear them right out. And so you can readjust them and realign them. And then finally, I've got kind of an estimate of everything on page nine, full-time equivalent days to complete. And you can see, we're looking at a little over a year. At 511 days max, 327 days minimum. But keep in mind, there's only 260 actual working days in a year for most workers. And that doesn't account for sick time, vacation time, holidays, that sort of thing, so.
So Ted, you, all your numbers are based on the, the maximum estimate?
Well, I provided you minimums and maximums. Sort of best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, El Nino year, non-El Nino year. Unfortunately, that isn't on based on what I know, it's on what I was thinking, so. And then the final two pages are just to give you kind of a cross-section of the actual diagram of our docks and what they kind of look like. And it's, it's just to kind of show you that it's fairly simple construction work, but it is big, heavy construction work. And you can see the through rod details going through there. Typical pile locations, the gussets, that sort of thing. It's, it's just there for, for your reference. Do I have any other questions?
No, anybody?
So I gave you a package deal.
Yes.
Are you, is this the, I should look at it, but you're going to give another report on the 15-year capital?
Yes.
Should we ask if we have any audience comments on this before we move into the next one?
Yeah, sure. You know, why not? Is there anybody in the audience that like, that would like to provide feedback from Ted's presentation?
Good evening, I'm Wayne Hendricks. I think most everybody here knows me. I'm a Brisbane resident for a very long time and a very active boater. I've been supporting the marina since day one. I can remember taking my first boat in there, one of my first early boats, and there was only half a dozen boats in the whole marina. So I've been on board, literally, from day one. And over the years, my boats have changed. And I've got a, I've had a slip down there almost consistently for almost 20 years. So I'm behind the curve here. I'm very, very impressed with Ted's presentation. I didn't realize you guys were this far into this. I came down to present a property owner and a boat owner's perspective. And you guys have already taken a walk on the docks, so it's pretty obvious you guys have seen a lot of the damage that's occurring and continues and all that jazz. And from my point, obviously, these docks that are cockeyed and stuff like that are pretty important. You know, you talked about falling maybe in the water, maybe on the dock. Or if you fell and hit a cleat with your face or your knee, it could get very dramatic, much more so. But also, I see things, like Ted pointed out, part-time workers can never accomplish what a full-time worker can accomplish in, in eight hours. Because the time to set up and breakdown time cuts the production time in half. That presents a budget challenge. But I'm sure you guys are all aware of that. But I've worked construction for over 50 years on both boats and buildings and stuff like that. And I know if you have continuity, like Ted was hoping for, you'd get a roll on and keep it going. I don't know exactly what the answers are. But one of the things that comes to mind while I'm listening to this is perhaps the two employees could be hourly. In all my years of construction, 50 years of being a union electrician here in San Mateo County, I never had, I always worked by the hour. If I showed up a half hour late, it didn't show up on my paycheck. And if it was raining, we stayed home, we didn't get paid for those days. That might be one way to look at this. I don't know if it's practical for your guys' position or not, but that worked for us. And we didn't have PERS, all our retirement, we contributed out of our paycheck. So things like that are different than in public service, I suppose. Again, this isn't my level of expertise, but I can, I am good with power tools. Sometimes you brought up power tools in the rain. Very common now are people use battery-powered tools. It's very, very common. And they're not afraid to go into hot busbars with, with battery-powered drills, which I would, just wouldn't do. I wouldn't even think about that. So power-wise, that's a whole nother element.
I've got some stories about that.
For another time. I have plenty of them. But anyway, those are a couple of observations I have. But also, some of the things that are glaring to me are like the spalling of the docks, which I'm sure you guys have talked about at different times. It's where the concrete blisters up and you see the rebar. Water goes through the concrete, it's very common in places where it snows and have ice. Water enters the concrete, it rusts the rebar, and the concrete pops up. And then the water continues to enter the concrete, and continues the spalling until it literally destroys buildings. If you've ever been to Havana, you'll see whole buildings that fall down for just this reason. And I was walking the docks last Saturday, and I saw a lot of spots that are spalled and haven't been repaired, and there's cracks where it's coming up. And some of the patches that have been done with, of wide variety of materials too, that weren't professionally done, and it shows. Scuffed up different colors, and they're starting to spall again. And one of the docks that was repaired there, they did the woodwork and they put these gussets in. But the concrete right along that edge where it butts into the new wood is spalled all off. The whole lip of it is broken off. And that moisture, moisture will continue to spall that concrete and blow these things to bits. There's no question about it. And so I don't know if it would have been repaired at that time, but I think you sandblast it, and then seal it, and put epoxy, and then patch it up. It's a concrete guy's method of repair. Like, you'd ask me how to repair electrical stuff, and you'd ask a concrete guy how to fix these things. So that's something else that obviously has to be addressed. And there's a lot. I only walked docks one and two, and there's lots and lots and lots of them, just on those two docks. So these are other issues that I think are important. And I've got a whole litany of things that I could bring up, but I think perhaps for another time. I don't know if this helps any, but it's other things to look at. It's a real challenge. I mean, obviously, the marina's a moneymaker, and we can't allow it, the wheels to fall off the bus out there. We just can't let this happen. And I'm sure you guys know this. I can tell by the targets on their backs, you're hearing about it. That's all for now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So Ted, you want to address those couple of items, the spalding and then?
I'm aware of the spalding, and I don't want to spend a whole evening, but it has to do with the cause of electrolysis. And we've addressed electrolysis by putting in ground fault alarm systems on the transformers. Unfortunately, I don't have the personnel to monitor them. So we're aware of it. We're trying to implement an electrolysis monitoring program, which requires people and tools and equipment to go down and test cords and boats and stuff like that. But that's the function of the spalding on, in some of the areas that Wayne was speaking about, it has to do with the problem with electrolysis, which is definitely a subject for another day to get into. Because, again, we could spend all evening here talking about electrolysis and, and the issue with that.
So but that's an additional maintenance item that you made a decision not to include that in what you're doing?
Well, because it isn't structural. It is an integral to the, the whole floating dock system. And Wayne's right, we've tried different patch materials. The technology of patching concrete has changed over time. And the, the new patches that Neil actually put on Dock One used really good material. But again, it's, it's a maintenance issue. He's got to go out there, he's got to take a wire brush, grind as much rust away as he can, and then sets up this catalyst stuff in a bucket, and then fills it, and, you know, basically makes a patch.
So if you had to put that to.
I wouldn't characterize this as Wayne characterizes. I, I did walk the entire, every square foot of that marina. And we have areas where it is spalding. Dock One is the worst, because we have the bigger boats there that have the most electricity. They're having the biggest electrolysis problem. Dock Two is the second one, because we, again, bigger boats as we go from Dock One to Dock Six. The size of the boats go from larger to smaller. And therefore, the power needs and power requirements also diminish through that period. And I could write it on a graph showing sort of how the, from my perspective, how the electrolysis problem is there. Identifying it from an individual boat is more difficult. At this point, the technology that we have would be go to check each and every cord on each and every boat. We simply don't have the personnel to do that on a day-to-day basis. But if I may, if we could move ahead to the capital improvement project, I would like to.
I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Wayne brought up their comment about hiring hourly employees, that you don't have the benefit cost, but they could be there on a long-term basis to do the work. Did you think about that, and what was the reason for you decided to pursue this?
I would have to defer that to HR or Stuart.
Okay, let me ask you a question. If you had to hire somebody on an hourly basis, how much, how much would the hourly person's pay be?
Somewhere between $20 and $25.
$25.
Yeah.
I mean, we're governed by collective bargaining agreements, we're governed by Cal-PERS rules.
Right.
So we don't have the flexibility.
I don't know if your microphone's on, please.
It is.
Okay.
I just wasn't speaking well enough into it. So, you know, I mean, we can come back to you with kind of the explanation of all that. But, you know, obviously, we have state law that we have to operate under in terms of employees.
Can, can I, I want to pursue that, just to understand it. I respect that, and I do understand it. The state law would have more problem if you are replacing the full-time worker to save money and get an hourly rate. But we haven't had that. This is a position that we haven't had for a long time, and we're bringing brand-new hourly employee. How does the state get involved?
Well, there would still, there's, there's still a concept of bargaining unit work. And, and so if, even though you may be adding to that work as opposed to subtracting from it, you're still going to run into the, to an issue of, of, of the work falling into a category of workers that are in a collective bargaining unit.
Even though this is a union work, that union-certified employee that you're going to have?
If they're a city employee, they would be what, in, in a bargaining unit, yes.
Right.
Yeah. But we, we can explore that and see if there's, there's some possibilities there. It's just that, you know, we have different laws that we have to operate.
No, I realize that, but I, I think there's still room, just, not that I'm pushing for that, just to understand the cost of the two, that we can respond to an audience when they ask.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think, I think we need to at least take a look at that and, and see what are the, what are the issues involved.
All right, Ted, you want to go to the 15-year?
Thank you.
Capital improvement project.
Actually, this is a continuation of a capital improvement project that was first started in 2007. As you know, in the 2008 recession, a lot of things changed. What was on the list in 2007, some things that have been taken off. One was a water taxi. We were anticipating that the ferry would go to Oyster Point Marina. And at that time, when the economy was good, from my perspective, it made sense if we were to purchase a water taxi and run a, an enterprise transportation from Oyster Point to Sierra Point to fill the buildings that were then filled with people, it would, it would be a moneymaker for the city. That's completely off the list now. Given the current situation, if I were to make a recommendation to you regarding a water taxi, I would make the recommendation that we put an RFP out to a contractor to do contract work, and then take a percentage of whatever their, their net would be. So that, that's one of the things that was off the list. The refurbishment of the boater-only restrooms, that got pushed out a year. And as you know, last year, council approved a 2% birth rate increase for the purpose of completing the boater restrooms refurbishment. We, we finished the south restroom just this last two months. This winter, we'll start the north restroom. And I will jump directly to the list. And we have the north boater restroom in there at $40,000. It's actually about $39,000. But we anticipate completing that one this year. The wood component for the dock maintenance are the whalers, which was what I talked about in Phase One. Those are materials only. If we were to choose not to do that, we jump all the way up to the wooden dock component maintenance, which is under flotation, that you'll see in 2016, '17. Should that work not be completed, I would then therefore anticipate certain sections of, some of those areas that were also badly spalded and tilting as well. And I measured them out, and I contacted Bellingham Marine, and I came up with a number of $400,000. That's if you decide to do nothing. The north and south public restrooms, if we go back towards the top of the list, I've estimated refurbishing those for $100,000, both. Now, when we refurbished the south boater restroom, we knew full well that when we started tearing those walls out, we were going to find rotten studs. So what I was relying on with, working with the contractor, was when he completed that work, he would step back. My guys would come in, specifically Neil, David, and Todd, all part-timers, tear that old rotten wood out and replace it with new studs. Because I knew there was going to be a cost savings there. Even though it was going to be a little more time to complete the project, that was the strategy going in. The new boater, north boater restrooms would also have that same strategy moving forward this winter. And my part-time guys are ready and prepared to do that work once, once it begins. Now, in the north and south public restrooms, I anticipated that also. But it's going out into 2013, 2014. We know that behind the walls, bad things lurk there. And because I will no longer be here, it will be someone else's decision to make that. management decision whether to use existing city employees or to allow the contractor to do that work, which would understandably drive that cost up should the contractor be the one relied upon to do the stud work once they start getting into those walls. What we found was there was no moisture barrier behind a lot of what we found in the wood. And so when those guys had to dig out the wood, they basically had to come up about three feet to get all the rotten wood out, including the plywood and stuff. In some cases, we had to go higher because the moisture wicked up the studs and got into the crossmembers as well.
Ted, could we use material that doesn't rot? I mean, there are other, you know, I mean, maybe they're more expensive, but over the long haul, you know, they pay for themselves.
Well, when we rebuilt the existing, we used regular lumber grade dug fur. And then when we put the plywood back over it, we actually put a moisture barrier on it. So moisture wouldn't get to it and preserve it.
I thought that was kind of standard. So how did it get left out? I mean, it's kind of amazing.
This is 30 years ago. I don't know. I can't answer.
Still 30 years ago, you know.
It's sort of like some other construction projects that might not have been done correctly over the years. And in hindsight, we probably should have had better controls to begin with. And so.
The small boat launch ramp, human-powered craft, these are kind of pipe dreams, but they're not necessarily nightmares. At one time, the Department of Boating and Waterways had grant money available for these. Through the governor's reorganization plan, the Department of Boating and Waterways has now been moved into the Department of Parks and Recreation. There's still some uncertainty whether that's going to stay there. If, given the governor's tax increase in November, that could be shuffled around some more. The small boat launch, human-powered craft would be, I envision, somewhere down near where the, excuse me, public pumpout is. And at the time, they had an engineer, when I was drawing this up, who said, yeah, you could probably do a fairly easy one for $125,000. Because basically, what you're talking about is over the riprap of the rock, building a small structure, laying some concrete over that with a pad and a small floating dock so someone could carry down either a kayak or a small dinghy or what have you, or a sailboard and just simply launch it there. Again, as I say, at the time, there was grant monies available, so this might be a no-cost item if you ever get to this item and if a lot of other things fall into place or not.
Is that that money you were talking about that was from Schwarzenegger when he left office? That you said that over in San Leandro, they did some work?
Yeah.
That's that same money?
That was that same money. That was the same money.
So in order to get that money, we need to put forth a plan and to?
Well, it doesn't exist currently, unfortunately. The grant's been suspended, but it may be resurrected. So that's why I left it in here.
All right. When did the grant go away?
It went away, I think it was, it's been at least a year.
With redevelopment.
It's all part of budget crisis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to go along with that, the second item, which is a small boathouse, that would act in concert with the small human-powered craft that would be right there at that lot. So if there's no money available from a grant perspective to go ahead with the human-powered launch ramp area, then therefore, there's no need for a small boathouse. So one kind of goes hand in glove with the other. And I didn't identify a funding source for the small boathouse, although there's a small amount of money at the State Coastal Conservancy through the Water Trail. And in the next year, a lot of people are going to be applying for that money. And the Water Trail manager has indicated to us that they're going to try and get their biggest bang for the buck. So they're going to try and fund a lot of small projects and not look for larger projects. Because they only have $1 million and they have a number of us from the whole nine barrier counties, all kind of with our hands up. But that could be a possibility if we show a project that's really worthy and is going to show a high-volume usage. But given our location, I don't think we're going to be able to demonstrate that high-volume usage such as places like, excuse me, San Francisco, the Estuary, Oakland-Alameda, those kind of areas that already have a lot of high-foot traffic.
Yeah. I wanted to ask, this is kind of vague historical recollection, but I recall when they were first designing them, you know, there were some people who were really in favor of a boat launching area. And I think they were thinking in general, not just of, sorry, the human-powered, but also, you know, powerboats and so forth. And there was clientele in Brisbane even that was very much in favor of that. And then there was a very strong pushback because people felt that this would generate a lot of noise and traffic and it would undermine, you know, the tranquility of the marina like evidently the social parties have done. And so there was a lot of debate about that. And I think, you know, a decision was made not to have a, a specific policy decision was made not to have a launch area. But I think they were thinking of, you know, not just, you know, sailboats, but also powerboats and so forth. And remember, I'm sure you remember Clark.
Well, they weren't thinking about this.
No, 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 no.
Because this wasn't even popular back then.
Didn't even have that sort of thing. But it does remind me of that issue that came up. I think people were really thinking about powerboats and so forth.
They were, yeah.
And so this would be different. But I think it still would be prudent to kind of make it as a policy decision rather than just a capital improvement thing without, you know, considering it and pointing out that this is different than powerboats being, you know, launched and the leakage that could come from that and so forth and so on. But I do remember that being, you know, an issue a long time ago. And as Clark says, you know, times have changed and there are different kinds of launches that we're talking about here. But we need to make that clear so people won't, you know, get all up in arms.
Yeah, and that's why I put in here actually, human-powered craft.
Right.
To be very specific about that. In year 2014, '15, I've put in, and it's an arbitrary number, it could go up, it could go down, $50,000 for our support boat replacement. Currently, our boat, which is a 22-foot crystalliner, was purchased at the time the marina was built. It's 30 years old. Right now, it's over at Drake Marine. I don't know which number carburetor is getting put back on it, but, or number of starter, but it's getting a new carburetor put on it. It's got the original engine in it from 1983 and it's problematic. But we need to have a boat to be able to obviously do the work that I described in Phase One of the improvement project to be moving boats around. We probably do more inner marina boat moves with the support boat than we do to go assisting people. Modern boats are a lot more reliable than they used to be. We don't respond to emergencies nearly as much as we did even 10 years ago when I got here. Quite simply, people have the wherewithal through cellphones and they've gotten the education with respect to safe boating about not finding themselves in trouble out there. So less and less is the need for quote-unquote "rescues." And quite frankly, one of the internal policies I developed when I got here was, we're going to go no further than Hunter's Point to tow somebody in, and we're not going to go any further than halfway to the middle of the bay to tow someone in. If somebody is out there that far away and they're one of our tenants, they need to have Boat U.S., the Towboat Service, to come get them, basically the AAA of boating. Because it was taking time away from us to go out there and do that. Now, obviously, if they're right outside the entrance or they're right on the other side of the seawall and they require assistance, we're going to go get them because they're, quite frankly, they're our customers and we want to, you know, provide them with some security. But I still identify the need that we do need to have a support boat, for nothing else, to, as I said, move boats around the marina. But also, the channel marker lights and the channel marker dayboards that are outside the marina are our responsibility. They're considered private aids to navigation. And although we're not by law beholding to maintain them, it's good business to do so. The boaters appreciate it when they know that the aides are either working or if they're notified that they're not working, but that they will be working at some reasonable period of time. Particularly the flashing lights when people are coming at night, if they don't see one, you know, you could run into one of those aides and it could be a hazard. So I've put the boat in there. That number could be higher, could be lower. We could buy a used boat. The decision-makers that will decide that will base that on the needs that they have at that time, looking forward for the marina.
May I ask you a question? Ted, do we have any grants available for stuff like that? It seems like that there would be.
There used to be. There used to be ones for law enforcement. And at one time, I had a discussion with Chief Hitchcock, was our police chief, and we decided not to go down that road because it required the officers going to boating officer training. And it required them to maintain a certain log of time aboard the boat in order to get the grant for the boat. And so we decided it would be best for the city not to go down that road.
Is that true with fire also?
Yeah.
You have to do certain training.
Pumphead replacement. We provide pump-out service 24/7, 365 to anybody that wants to use it. It's open to any boater that wants to come in, not just the Brisbane residents. And we get boats from Oyster Point that come over and use it because, quite frankly, theirs is down. Now, the good news on the pumphead, and I put this number in here just as a number, but there is grant money available for that through the Clean Water Act. And we have also, my assistant, Susie Hamblin, has tapped into that fund for replacement parts. So what we do is we keep a store of parts, nozzles, valves, switches, all that kind of stuff, at the marina. So in case the pumphead ever breaks or a part of it breaks, the maintenance guys can just simply go down there, replace the part and keep it running continuously. So I don't think we've been down more than a day in the last five years, to be perfectly honest with you, or even more than that. But I put that in there. I mean, at some point, it does have, it wears out its useful life and it will need to be replaced, but there is grant money available for that and we anticipate it'd be around $20,000 bucks. The dumpsters recycling enclosure in 2015, '16. If you look at our garbage areas that were built long before I ever got here, they were made out of redwood. They're starting to show signs of wear. The $25,000 that's in there is for materials only. This is a carryover from the 2007 capital improvement project when I had more personnel. We estimated the lumber cost, again, it's subject to whatever the market is at that time, but we figured it'd be about $25,000 in lumber cost, anticipating that marina employees would do the construction work. And then we get down to that big number that I spoke about before, which is the flotation replacement. If we don't get to Phase One, Phase 2015, '16 looks at just simply the cost of replacing the flotation. That's simply for purchasing the flotation. It was impossible for me to really anticipate what a cost would be to put it in because, again, that would be contract work.
You've got a crane and everything.
You'd need a crane, you'd need workboats, and you'd need to have a marine contractor do the work. Because some of that flotation would be the main body walk, which would require someone to come in who's skilled and has the credentials to disconnect the electrical, the water, and the firefighting systems on that and then recouple them back up once they get those headwakes back in place. And that's a big, big job.
Right. So I want to make sure I understand. So this is what your estimate would be to do all that flotation replacement? If we don't do the maintenance of the whalers?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So this is a contingency component?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
But this is just for the cost of?
Purchasing them.
Purchasing, not installation.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the full cost of that would be double that?
At least.
Easily.
I would say triple. Given what it would cost for a marine contractor to do this kind of work. And I pushed it out to 2015, '16. I mean, that's another.
'16, '17.
Or '16, '17, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. I mean, five years means it starts to look like, I shouldn't mention the word, but Capes Marina up in Sausalito. Where you're walking on the side of the dock instead of the deck of the dock. And then we get to marina dredging. Now, I've split out the dredging. This is high-cost, conservative, the most expensive, based on, you know, we're a 30-year-old marina, but we've only really dredged twice. And the first dredging was part of the whole construction work. And there was no way for me to try to figure out through the documents that we have here at the city, how much material was actually moved. Because at the same time, they were grading roads and they were doing a lot of other things out there. But we do have one historical dredging, and that was back in 2000. So based on the 2000 dredging from the 17-year period, I simply moved that to the timeline where we are with 2016, or 2016, '17. The internal marina maintenance dredging, I estimated approximately 300,000 cubic yards. You only dredged 200,000 cubic yards last time. I anticipated the approach channel at 33,000 cubic yards based on the dimensions and the dredge depth at that time for that volume, based on $10 per cubic yard. Things change in this industry and they change primarily at BCDC level and they change with the Army Corps of Engineers where you can dispose the dredge material. The pendulum swings to be swinging in the direction that says, instead of taking this stuff way far away, maybe there's a beneficial use for it closer to home. Maybe it's useful for levee work. Maybe it's useful for, and they've already demonstrated that a lot of dredge, I don't like to use this word spoils, dredge material can be used for wetlands enhancement. And what they found is when they put it in wetlands enhancement and certain types of pickle weeds and eel grasses grow around it, it actually pulls some of the heavy metals and the pollutants out of the material. And they've demonstrated that at the Hamilton site up in Marin County. So one of the things they were asking last year was, we don't want you to dispose at Alcatraz, which was our last dredging disposal site. What they do is they go and they take a hopper dredge, they take the material to Alcatraz. As the tide is going out the Golden Gate, they release it. It's all kind of in sedimentation and hopefully, a good amount of it flows out the gate. A lot of it doesn't and it settles to the bottom. And there's a little mound at Alcatraz that they monitor. And based on the amount of applications for marinas that want to dredge, they monitor that mound. And if you want to dredge, say, 500,000 cubic yards, they may say, we'll let you dredge, dispose 200,000 cubic yards, but the other 300,000 cubic yards you need to take to Hamilton, which is farther away and it costs more to dispose of. Fortunately, BCDC is looking at the big gorilla in the room, and the big gorilla in the room is the Port of Oakland. Port of Oakland dredges more material than anybody in the San Francisco Bay. And they recognize that the small marina operators like us, we are burdened economically to the point where we would not be able to dredge if we were not able to go to Alcatraz. So they're now putting the bigger burden of material handling on the Port of Oakland. So the Port of Oakland has to spin more for their dredging, which makes sense if you think about the economies of scale. So I'm hopeful that we will continue to use Alcatraz as a disposal location or perhaps even a closer location that might be identified later on down the road. But again, we're looking out to 2017 for that occurrence.
If I could, on that, because, yeah, I know it's been used for upland, wetland restoration and, you know, there might be some projects available, even like with the Baylands coming on, that there could be some stuff out there that could coincide with it. And so that's just something to kind of keep on our radar, I think, as a city, you know, what we want to do and how that would work, you know, from a functionality point of view. But I recall, was it $2.1 million is what it cost last time? Is that what it was?
It sounds about right, yeah.
And there was a policy question at the time about whether dredging down nine feet or 12 feet?
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. And there was a big, big difference in cost.
Right.
Going at extra three feet. And I think we went nine feet. But I think with this too, we can monitor and see where it's at. Because where you really look at is low tide. And Wayne, I'm sure you remember this, and you had something that had a deeper centerboard that 2000, I know, you know, at low tide, I would drag at times. And it'll get that right now. So, I mean, it'd be kind of interesting to find out where exactly we are because I think that first years of sedimentation, there was much more construction work going on out there. And so you would move much more dirt than what's being blown in there now, you know? So it'd be interesting to kind of see what.
Yeah, the weather has a lot to do with it also. After heavy rain season, you know, there's, even if you look here from our mountain, you'll see kind of muddy, murky looking water. Well, that's a lot of runoff.
Right.
And there are runoffs in sedimentation. And if it's on an incoming tide and we don't have a lot of storms, that sedimentation's got to fall out somewhere.
Right.
You know?
What is the, what's the, the critical depth when you need to, you need to respond?
Well, the first boater that complains will consider that the most... But as, as I've indicated to staff and to Clay, that you need to get your biggest bang for your buck when you're doing dredging because it's very expensive. It's very expensive for them to mobilize all the equipment to your location. So you want them to dig as much material as possible in that, in that digging window. And you're mostly going to get a three-month window from August to about October for, for our neck of the woods to dig as much as you can. So you'll find other marinas where people are starting to leave, they're really starting to complain, they're sitting in the mud for long periods of time. It's because the marina operator wants to get as much material out in that one episode of dredging because it's so expensive.
So they're waiting to have it build up, build up and then...
Yeah.
And do the work.
And you can do surveys and the surveys can show you, based on what's called your, your survey depth, where you are and how many cubic yards might need to be removed. And if it's 50,000 cubic yards, in our particular case, it's not cost-effective to have someone coming down and dredge that at $10 a cubic yard when you're also going to pay for the mobilization costs and the demobilization costs. So that part of it kind of is, it takes a little bit of finesse.
So the deeper the mud is, the more expensive it is? Is that what you're saying? And then, but if the mud is closer to the surface, easier to access?
They're going to charge you on a volume basis. But what I'm saying is that because it's so expensive to bring the equipment down there, you want to get as much volume as possible, even though it's going to cost you more. So for instance, in our case, I, I used a benchmark of 50,000 cubic yards. My advice would be, let's wait till we need 100,000 cubic yards. Go ahead and lose a few boaters, they'll go to other marinas. We do have turnover. I know that sounds kind of cold-hearted, but it's true. Boaters move around, they go to different marinas. You know, our turnover on any given month is anywhere from 10 to 20 boaters leaving and 10 to 20 boaters coming in. So, you know, boating in San Francisco Bay is somewhat dynamic that way. And what ends up happening, and Lockloman just went through this two years ago, they got to a point where nearly all the boats are sitting in the mud. And they, they got down to about 60% occupancy, they went out and they dredged and he's back to 100% occupancy because he advertised, we're dredged, we're nine-foot depths, come on back. And, and they came back. So because it is expensive and because there's no return on your investment, you know, this, this is a cost of maintenance that needs to be done really, really thoughtfully, even in spite of the fact that some of your boaters are going to run aground and some boaters you can't accommodate. We had a couple of 10-foot draft racing sailboats in the marina a couple of years ago and I told one of them, you know, at low tide and mean lower low water, you're going to be on the bottom. And he accepted that and took the slip. Six months later said, you know what, I really can't deal with looking at the tide tables all the time every time I want to take my boat out, so I'm going to leave. And he, and he went to, I think it was Lockloman, wasn't it? Yeah, he went to Lockloman where they just dredged.
All right. So this, this data is really more of a guess. I mean, it could go out longer, but it could...
It's a guess.
...pass sooner. Okay. All right.
Ted, I have a question on, right at this point though, for the majority of our boaters, the depth is adequate.
Yes, it is. It is.
I had another question here and I'm trying to think what it was. Isn't there a delay? So once we decide we need to dredge and get an idea of the figure of, of the amount of cubic yards, isn't there a fairly substantial delay time in getting permitting for that dredging?
Yeah, it's a process.
School is now in session. It, it takes about a year from the time you decide that's what you want to do to the time you actually get to dig the muck. What it requires, and this would be my best advice, would be to hire a marine engineering firm such as Moffett Nickel, CQA. These are guys that either worked in the Army Corps of Engineers, they've been around the permits before, they, they know how all this works because timing is crucial. Without going into a lot of detail, there's a lot of tests that are done. There's tests that are done to the water, there's tests that are done to the material that's going to be dredged, samples are taken, they grow little critters in the samples, they do bioassays, they do chemical tests of your water. Then you go before the dredge management marina office in San Francisco where all the 22 permitting agencies sit around a table, which include US Fish and Wildlife Service, CalEPA, Department of Fish and Game, Army Corps of Engineers, air quality, I can't name them all right now, but they're around a table.
BCDC.
And they look at your dredge plan and they look at whether or not you have natives, where the salmonoids are, what the fish species are, what the water quality looks like, what your heavy metals and pollutants look like, what the pollutants in the mud look like, the amount of, amount of critters that are living in the mud, whether the ones that they took as samples that were put in a laboratory and given test lives, what their useful life is. All that stuff takes a long, long time. Not every agency has the right to permit, but every agency has the right to comment and they do. And you have to have a vegetation management plan. And usually what will happen is if you hire one of these engineering firms and their cost is usually about $100,000 for the year that they'll walk you through that, they get you your permit. Then the easy part begins. You, you go out to bid for the dredgers on removing the material and then the fun begins, moving all the boats around and, and basically digging the stuff out and then moving them all back and, and, and doing that, that dance of the boats. That's the easy part. The hard part is really getting the permits and it is time-consuming. And there is a window that Brisbane sits in and that, that window, because salmonoids have been discovered up the channel between Oyster Point and Oyster Cove some years ago, that was called a fish window. And after the summer salmon run, we are allowed to dredge beginning late October into Nov- I believe it's into November. But we're cut off in November because of the Dungeness crab, even though one's never been found in our location. Decision makers said, you're going to stop before Dungeness crab season. So that's a very good question.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more dredging questions? It's really not that bad. It's, it's just knowing that these agencies are there, that they all have one particular issue that is their bailiwick. Department of Fish and Game, it's all about what fishes are out there and you have to have a, you know, a biological study from, from a fisheries expert. Someone from US Fish and Wildlife Service for the endangered species is, they're going to want to know if you have eel grass and where it is and they're going to want to see a map of all the vegetation around the marina and, and what's growing there and identified. You're going to have the biologist from Regional Water Quality Control Board and they're going to want to know what the pollutants are in the water. So all those people have one single focus. Fortunately, the folks in the marine industries that do this kind of work are laser focused on knowing what those things are.
It sounds like a collaborative environmental impact study.
That's a good way of putting it. It, it really is. The marina maintenance building I put down here, it's, it's a pipe dream, it's $130,000. I put it out to 2020 and 2021. Some of you are familiar with the building that we call Fort Apache, which is that kind of structure that was somehow put together. I'm not sure it was properly permitted or what have you, but it's, it's there. We use it, it's useful. Quite frankly, with the kind of work that's done at the marina, identified that we need to have a nice, safe shop for saws and workbenches and those kinds of things. And Fort Apache is very marginal, which is why this building is in here.
The one with the canvas roof?
Yeah. And it's part open and part closed. Part yard and part building.
Okay.
Anyway, that, that's in there and that was based on a square footage number of just a real, basically a hole, if you will, of a building, just a shell of a building, basic walls, unfinished interior with a roof over it, is, is where I came up with that number. At some point, we're going to have to replace our maintenance truck. In the last several years, we've shifted away from using the truck more frequently to using electric vehicles. Randy was kind enough to surplus an electric vehicle to us that he was going to unload and my guys got some old batteries and got the thing running and we're using it now for garbage pickup and for patrolling the grounds along with the EZ Cart Cushman. And I like having the electric vehicles around the marina because I think for the boater, it gives them not only a sense that there's not a noisy smelling gasoline vehicle going by them, but I think they get a sense that they're in a unique environment. It's almost like a resort. You know, someone's buzzing by you in a nice uniform and they're, they're driving a quiet vehicle that's not polluting and it, it feels like a happy place to be, for lack of a better term. But again, someone else will make that decision whether or not the maintenance truck actually does get to be replaced. We do use it for hauling heavy, big stuff and we do use it for, you know, driving farther distances. So we're less reliant, reliant upon it for just around the marina as we used to be more so in the past. Fish pier improvement, sanitary sewer. This is somewhat of an arbitrary number, $75,000. The Clean Water Act requires that all potable water not be allowed to be discharged into San Francisco Bay. This came up about 10 years ago when I was first hired here, that the sink at the fish cleaning station out at the end of the pier simply drains into San Francisco Bay. I come to find out that every pier and, and wharf in all of San Francisco Bay all drain into San Francisco Bay. I contacted Regional Water Quality Control Board and had a confidential conversation with an individual there in the enforcement division who was very well aware of this issue, but basically told me they had bigger fish to fry and they realized it was a problem. However, as your marina manager, it would, it would be impertinent of me not to identify this as a problem and not put it in here as an improvement that at some future point, we should probably think about, you know, having that sink drain all the way back to the sanitary sewer. How would we accomplish that? I don't know. Would be something of an engineering, of an engineering feat that probably we'd have to involve Randy in because quite frankly, you know, it's, it's a straight run on a, on a no grade from the pier to the sanitary sewer. And so we don't have gravity on our side to have that thing drain to the location where we need it to drain, so...
Randy already deals with that, it's called a pump.
A pump, right.
Lift station.
Exactly. So anyway, that's put in for 2020, 2021. And then the hazardous materials collection building, which is actually in really good shape and we've maintained it in good shape. But I put, put that out all the way to the full 15 years to 2026, 2027, is needing to be rebuilt again. That's probably materials, 25,000, but also it's to understand that with respect to the storage of hazardous materials, the, the, the laws that govern storing, storing these things over my career have gotten more and more and more difficult and stringent. And I would suspect that they would want double containment at the very minimum and impervious, instead of a concrete berm, they would want something that would be an impervious berm to any kind of fluid that might spill out to protect the bay waters. And so that's why that number is there. And then I'm, I'm pretty much done there with the marina. We never know what's going to happen. I mean, obviously emergencies occur, we have windstorms, who knows when the next earthquake's going to be? All this could just get, you know, thrown into the shredder if something bad happens. But, but that's sort of what I identified for you moving ahead for another 15-year capital improvement project. Certainly my predecessor, whoever comes after me, can certainly either take this and, and use it as a guide or they can start one of their own based on, you know, their best experience and, and what they know. But anyway, that, that's my, my first blush at it. So the next project is...
One other question. Someplace in the material here, I saw there was a depreciation expense of 240,000? Saw that somewhere.
Appreciation or depreciation?
Depreciation.
Depreciation.
Yeah. And so my question is, so what is that intended to replace? Clearly, you know, depreciation expenses of saving up funds to replace something. But, okay, that's a Stewart question, right?
We can get to that. It's part of my staff report, so when I get, go to that, that might be the best time...
But it struck me that it's related to capital improvement program.
Correct. I mean, it, the depreciation is on all of the marina facilities. So it's for the marina building, it's for the docks. So it's for all these items that Ted has been talking about that need maintenance.
About dredging.
No, because that's not a depreciable, that would not be a depreciable item.
Okay, that's what I sort of figured. And how do you finance that thing? You have to have a bond or...
Either that or you need to have enough money saved to do that.
So you have to have some sort of a sinking fund or something?
Yes.
To collect the dough in anticipation of this expense?
Correct.
Okay. We're not doing that now?
No.
Before you move on to the swimming pool projects, I understand there's some electrical issues going on right now at the marina on dock sticks. I had a boater call me this afternoon to alert me and to ask what I can do and what questions I can ask of you in response to the electrical issues that are out there and that they have some very strong concerns about both safety on the dock currently and the safety of the boats and the electrical equipment on the boats due to this power electrical issue. And so I was hoping that you could let me know and let the council know what's going on currently.
Yeah, this is actually a repair in progress. On Friday, we discovered, last Friday, we discovered that there was voltage variations that one of the boaters said, hey, my, I'm not getting enough juice here. And so Dave went out with a volt meter and found voltage variations among the different electrical outlets on the dock. Over the weekend, he called in one of the other part-timers who's good with this stuff. And we have three phases of electrical circuitry that goes out to Dock 6. One of the phases has got a short somewhere along the line and we've, we traced it all the way back to one of three junction boxes that are in the ground where all of the phase wiring comes in. At that point, we contacted Capital Electric on Monday morning, who's electrical contractor because our guys have no business going into those vaults. And Capital Electrical came out and attempted to troubleshoot which length of the phase it was and they were fairly certain of which one it was. One of the problems was the vaults, because they're below grade, are underwater. And so today, they said that they weren't going to come out and finish the work until we could get the water excavated out of the vault. One of the vaults is six feet deep. So there was some discussion about bringing the VAC truck in to do it, but right now, the, the electricity is still on to those underground vaults. This afternoon, I contacted Mark Olson Electric, who works specifically on marina dock stuff and on wet electrical service areas. Now, these, these vaults were designed for the electrical stuff to be underwater at the time the marina was built. So it's no mystery to us, there's water in these vaults. He's going to come out tomorrow morning and troubleshoot from there on forward. As far as safety, being on the dock and using electrical stuff is safe. It's just, if you plug in your blender, it may not run as quickly as you want it to run because the voltage has decreased. And that's quite simply where we are.
So that wouldn't have, and I understand you probably, you're not an electrician, but that wouldn't have an effect on or damage some of the high-end electronics that are on these boats?
If for anything, it's getting less juice, so whatever you have on, may not be on.
Okay. And then, thank you for that. Now, on a, on a whole different sort of question, although it's electrical. On boats, they put zincs in the water or on the boat to absorb some of the electrolysis that's going on. Is that something that happens on the dock?
It doesn't happen on the dock, but it is a problem. Electrolysis with the boaters and their individual boats that are not properly grounded is a problem and that was what I alluded to with the splain of the concrete. What ends up happening is you get electrons in the water and because we're in a... What ends up happening is you get electrons in the water and because we're in a rich, salty environment that's moist and the concrete docks are like sponges and they're moist, the electricity runs up to the rebar. The rebar starts to corrode at a higher rate than normal, which creates the spalding issue. If we can curtail the electrolysis problem on the individual boats, then we can curtail that problem for just the usual moisture that would rust the rebar. So the electrolysis actually accelerates the rusting of the rebar more quickly than just in an environment without it.
Okay. So something like the zinks that they use on a boat isn't something that you can use on the dock to help?
No. The zinks on the boat are actually sacrificial so that the electrons eat the zinc instead of eating the through-hole fitting that may be made out of bronze or brass or stainless steel.
Okay. Okay. So it doesn't do that for the steel rebar?
No, it doesn't do that for us for the steel rebar.
Thank you.
Now, the next body of water is the pool. I've got in here recently, let's talk about the kiddie pool. Last few years, we made a management decision to shut down the kiddie pool. The reason being is the kiddie pool holds about 1,000 gallons worth of water. And it's a, basically, it is water pumping through the pumps, but it's basically a static body of water. And what we found is every time, on a hot day, the mothers come down with toddlers, they put those kids in the pool and suddenly the kids do what kids do when they're put in pool, when they're toddlers, they go to the bathroom in it. When they do that, immediately, the chemistries are off and the water becomes unsafe. And what our lifeguards have had to do is remove the children out of the water, test the water, shock the water with chlorine, wait a half hour until it's settled, check it again, then allow them back into the kiddie pool. This became such a problem because of the cost of maintaining the lifeguard to do that. We made the conscious decision, we cannot simply station a lifeguard at the kiddie pool every single day that unfortunately, people want to use their toddlers to use the kiddie pool because it's just not cost-effective to do that. And we also had an alternative to that, and that is the zero-entry water area where they could take toddlers in a 160,000 gallon pool. So we made the conscious decision to close down the kiddie pool. I had FencePro board it over and we sealed it so water can't get in there because I wanted to preserve, you know, the drains and the pumps and all that stuff that's in there. So it's currently shut down. I was in contact with several pool operators because I thought, you know, we're a municipal pool, we can't be the only ones with a kiddie pool that has this unique problem. And sure enough, there's a number of municipal pools that have had the same problem and they've shut down their kiddie pools. What they've done is they've reconverted those kiddie pools into splash features or water features. And I spoke to a Dave Jacuzzi after a number of phone calls through Royal Pool and Hill Pools and whatnot, and I got to a guy who's an expert who does this stuff. And he told me that the state of California is going to be changing the law on September the 1st, that anything a municipal pool operator does to make an improvement is going to require a UV bacteriostatic system in place. So if we want to convert the kiddie pool, we've got to buy one of these systems. Additionally, he told me that for a kiddie pool of the size we're looking at, for the splash kind of feature we would look for, we would also have to have a 4,000 gallon tank that we can treat to make sure that the splash feature is safe going through the system. So when I started looking into a UV system, they're $30,000. A 4,000 gallon tank? Take your best guess. Anyway, Dave Jacuzzi, who's of the Jacuzzi family, said if you wanted to purchase one and start today from ground level zero and you didn't have any of the equipment that you already have, figure $225,000. He says they bring these things basically already built in on a platform and they can put it into place for you. But if you want to do a retrofit, you're probably looking at design elements, you're looking at a tank, you're looking at a UV system. And I said, is $100,000 a reasonable number? And he said, yeah. And several cities have already done this. And he sent me some pictures that I didn't print out in time to get here, but El Cerrito is one of them. There's a town in Sonoma that I can't remember right off the top of my head did another one. And basically what they did is they used the existing platform where the pool is and they built a platform over it. They used all the existing stuff. They've got a tank, they've got the system, and they've created these little splash zones right on the deck surface and so everything drains back down there. And it's something for at least the kids to do, that they can run through it, the toddlers can run through it, on basically a non-slip surface. I put that in there because I thought it would be a really good alternative for the toddlers and for the little kids that the mothers really want to kind of get them wet with, other than trying to deal with this issue of kiddie pool and the disappointment that it brings when we have to close it down. I put that out to 2015, 16. That's just an arbitrary number. This is something the council can talk about more, you know, as you go down the road. Maybe the community can get involved and maybe I might have some ideas with respect to, you know, addressing this problem. But quite frankly, you know, the kiddie pool is problematic and, you know, in this economy, we simply can't justify having a lifeguard do nothing but monitor the kiddie pool during the hours of operation. And nevertheless, there's times we still have to close it down to make it safe again. So it's a matter of public health.
How long ago did we close it down?
Two years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank God.
Also, in...
Ted, I think Ray's got a question.
I'm sorry.
That is Clark. Yeah. I'd like to see some pictures of, you know, what this, I mean, I can sort of imagine what you're talking about, but it would be kind of fun to see a picture. And also, if we go out to the Recreation Commission or to the mob, you know, show them what we're talking about. So I think we need some visuals.
Maybe you could send us some links.
To make this real. Yeah, that would be nice.
Send the council some links so they can check it out.
The other thing is, I mean, this is for kids, of course, and small kids especially. And that's one end of the spectrum. But the other end of the spectrum on Brisbane, I've been talking about a hot tub. That's obviously an adult feature. What do you think about that?
I took the Certified Pool Operator Course and I would never climb into a public hot tub. I'll just leave it at that. Because of the chemicals. You know, your body gives off bacteria, just your skin, oils, perfumes. That's one of the reasons why we try to encourage people when they use the pool to shower first, to get that stuff off before they go in the pool, because it does affect the chlorine levels, it does affect the pH levels, it does affect, you know, all that stuff, bacteria. There are certain kinds of skin diseases, I can't remember the name of it, but you can get a skin disease if you have a hot tub that's not in the proper chemical realm that is in a safe level. That seems innocuous at first, but it turns into a rash and you actually have to go to a doctor and get it treated, that kind of stuff. But it's certainly something that if people want it, you know, moving ahead forward, recognizing that it would require, you know, a lot of monitoring and testing, you know, certainly if that's what the community wants.
Could it end up in the same kind of situation as the toddler pool? Where you're monitoring it all the time and...
Very well could.
So you couldn't end up with the same problem?
Yeah. Hot tubs in general need to be monitored at least every couple of hours, minimum. And particularly if you go to the hotel out in Fresno and there's a hot tub, I would certainly test the water with my litmus tester before I ever get in it. Because unfortunately, a lot of those kinds of locations, they're not tested frequently and regularly.
Thank you.
Oh, no, Clark first.
Well, I had a comment. Actually, being on the design committee when I went to build this and so we went around and talked to a lot of the pool operators, said, so, you know, you have your pool and stuff, what's something that you would do different? And the common factor to those pools that didn't have a kiddie pool all said, you know, we'd have a kiddie pool on a separate pump and filtration system because if kids get in the pool, they go to the bathroom, we have to have everybody get out. And so really, it's served its purpose. It's really functioned well because you're shutting down 1,000 gallons versus 130,000 gallons. And so from that aspect, it's served its purpose. But, you know, I think Ted's comment on the economic times has made it to where it's cost prohibitive because we're looking at cutting back. So...
How often do we...
Spend 200 and something thousand dollars on doing a water feature, $250,000 on something that really has been functional, but it's just a budgetary thing that maybe, you know, something to look at is that's one way of looking at it. But another way of looking at it too is, well, it really has served its purpose and it is functional, that maybe we ought to look at, you know, some futuristic way of doing that automation, automatic monitoring with the bells and whistles or, you know, or how the chemicals are added and stuff like that. Because, you know, it's really just a matter of switches and monitors and everything like that. It just depends on how sophisticated you want to get. Because you want to spend money on this, the new water feature that we don't know what the problems with that is going to be, or maybe invest in adding some devices and mechanisms that can do a better job where it's not as person-intensive. You know what I mean? And that's really kind of a call on our part. So it's not that the kiddie pool is not a bad thing, it's really served its purpose and it's really functioned. It's just, you know, so, you know, I don't want to, you know, I kind of want to be clear on the whole picture, you know, and for the council to be, oh, the kiddie pool doesn't work, you know. So it's really, it really has worked.
Ted, how often do we close the main pool to...
Only what we call, what we call is a fecal emergency or a vomiting emergency. And what we do is we clear the pool, everybody out of the water, remove the affluent, the lifeguard shock the pool with chlorine, and it's down for a minimum of a half an hour at the very minimum. Usually it's down about two hours. They do several cycles of testing to make sure that it's adequate. And by law, I believe we're supposed to be down by a minimum of 45 minutes. But on a super-hot days, people have pushed it and they've gotten past lifeguards and gotten in the water. And it's been a real, it's been a real problem sometimes trying to keep people out of the water when you're trying to do this for public safety for their own behalf.
But it only gets shut down for fecal matter or vomiting?
Right.
It hasn't been shut down for other reasons that maybe the kiddie pool used to alleviate?
Right. But...
Are you done?
Sally?
I added up all the items and it looks like maybe one item for 90,000 is missing. And the total that shows here estimate for CIP is 4.6. And when I added all of them, I come up for 4.55. So I think one item may be missing or...
Could have been my calculator.
Okay. But I just wanted to make sure, sometimes the spreadsheet and what we type could be different. So...
Thank you.
I would check that, sure.
Okay, I'll check my math.
Not that really 90,000, 100,000 would make a difference. Huh?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get Sherry's attention. Yes.
But if I may comment on the kiddie pool also, we did build a nice deck around it so there is a nice surface. It is sealed with sickle flex so the water won't get in it. So basically, it's preserved, it's in a useful condition right now to be used as decking material. You can always come back and change your mind and simply lift it out and fire it back up. So basically, I've preserved it until council wants to make a decision on what they want to do with it.
Super soaker hose. Let them just...
Bring a dredging machine.
Well, Dave Jacuzzi did make a comment to me. He says, just take a big, long section of hose and just put them on the lawn with a hose and let the water run. That'll be a lot cheaper.
A lot cheaper.
Slip and slide.
Okay, the next item was the remove and repave concrete decking. If you'll notice, close to the pool building, the concrete around the pool right there where people enter and exit from the locker rooms is starting to get really kind of worn and pitted. Now, we're probably a few years away from having to do that to literally, and the numbers that I used were numbers of basically jackhammering up certain square sections where I see the most amount of damage or the most amount of wear and actually coming in with a contractor and pouring new concrete in there. So this is a real number based on real figures, what's currently out there, to do several of those big sections right in front of the building, between the pool and the pool building itself. And also the ones kind of off to the sides where you come in and out of the outside doors for the locker rooms. And that's where I see the most amount of deckware out there.
But that's something that probably should be done fairly soon, wouldn't you agree?
I'm not exactly sure how thick it is, how deep it is. I mean, I'm not a concrete guy, so, you know, I just kind of put that. The number is correct as far as the timing.
Okay, so we need that investigated more.
We need that investigated more.
A lot of people have observed that and they're concerned about it, so...
And the water doesn't drain very well there when you get a lot of usage on a heavy day. It doesn't evaporate very quickly. And you'll notice it right outside the back door, there's an area where the water simply stays puddled there, particularly in the summertime. When we're from 6:00 AM to 8 o'clock, it's pretty much there all the time. And then rebuilding the locker rooms, I kind of approached these much like I approached the restrooms, looking at tile and fixtures and sinks perhaps, maybe showers. But again, that's a number that's kind of arbitrary and it's probably a lot more than that if you were to go through and do, and all the way down to the studs refurbishment. I think with just good, proper maintenance over time, you know, replacing shower stalls is needed, replacing showerheads is needed, locker doors, those kind of things, I think you cut that number basically out of the equation. But it was something I had to address because I know it has a useful life. And I put it in there anticipating if we did nothing. So that was what my assumption was based on.
So only an additional five or six years on the lifespan for that?
But like anything, if we keep up on the maintenance of it, then replacement isn't the issue. You know, particularly if we're replacing components as we need to before they actually fail.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, the weak part there, of course, is the showers.
Yes. Particularly in the women's locker room, where it's kind of constantly wet all the time. And we are going to have the locker rooms, we do this every year, at least since I've been overseeing the aquatics portion, every year about this time, we do a deep clean. Jan Pro comes in, they do the men's locker room, they do the women's locker room, this time, they're going to do the office itself. And they're going to come in on the 15th of September and be on their contract level and do all the grout and mildew areas, all that, and make sure it's all dry before they leave. Because the problem is, when we come off the season, again, we're open from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night, you know, the locker rooms are constantly wet for months on end. And even with the janitors going in there and cleaning, when you get there in the morning to do the lap swim, they're still wet. And so you're going to have mildew problems. So Jan Pro uses environmentally neutral products and I have to give them the approval to use bleach in order to go in there and do the deep clean, which I do on the deep cleans. So they're going to do that on the 15th of this month. But as long as we maintain that and keep that kind of maintenance going, then we stay ahead of the curve on having to do repairs and replacements. Anyway, that concludes my report for the 15-year capital improvement project for the marina.
Any other questions?
Thanks very much.
Very good, Ted.
Yeah. You know, Ted, I do have just one question. You know, I mean, all the, you know, all the marinas are dealing with these issues. Are there any programs that you know of at the marinas where they're being able to get boaters to do certain, like boater volunteer days to work on projects that, you know, don't, you know, require a lot of skill? Or maybe there are some folks like Wayne who do have some skills that can do some of these projects?
Yeah, usually, usually the yacht clubs, the larger yacht clubs from time to time do marina cleanup days and they do those kinds of special projects, kind of as a part of their yacht club cleanup day. So there are some that do that. As far as our volunteer base, I don't know how strong it would be. The only reason I say that is because we have so many people that I look to see where we mail the bills to, and they're all over the United States. We send bills to Utah, Pennsylvania, New Mexico, Texas, state of Washington. We even send a bill to Switzerland. There's a guy who owns a boat in the marina who lives in Switzerland. And I did put the call out in one newsletter asking... for office support staff to volunteer and I got one phone call. And she wanted to work for basically slip credits against the work. And I said, "Let me think about it." And I called her back and I said, "That's a good idea. I'm willing to do that." And she said, "No, I don't want to do it." So, but I do want to leave a parting comment. Now that we've talked about the marina and what may, what needs to be done moving ahead here, we're not in terrible shape. We're in pretty good shape compared to other marinas. And anybody who's out there in the audience or even the council, I would, you know, welcome that you go to different marinas and just look at them. You can go next door and look at a marina next door to us. I won't mention any names. Go to Sausalito and look at some of the marinas there and some of the marinas in Alameda and then make the contrast and comparison. And even though from my perspective, because, you know, I want to run a really tight ship and I want a good quality product out there for you and for the boaters, these kind of repairs do concern me very, very deeply. In many other marinas, they don't. They don't concern the marina operator and they don't concern the owners of the marinas. And that's evident in looking to see the condition that those marinas are in. Everything from the landscaping to the kinds of cars that are parked in the parking lot to the types of boats that are tied to the slips. You know, over the years, I've cared about what that place looks like and the kind of boats that are in there and who boats out of that marina. And I hope to thank that I leave some value with that, you know, pursuing this along and even getting to where we are today saying, "We need to get this done," before we start looking like those other marinas who will remain nameless. Anyway, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted. You want to say something?
No, Mr. Hendrix.
Oh, Wayne, come on up, please.
Clark, can you? I have a few comments, as I mentioned earlier. I want to start off by saying, I am no way criticizing Ted. I think he's done a great job. He's got a lot of challenges on a day-to-day basis between the people, the individuals that show up and blah, 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 as well as taking into care of the budget and his proposals and his budget he's presented is as most comprehensive I've ever heard anywhere. I really regard that. I had no idea that he puts so much into something like that. But it shows a deep commitment and I agree with him that our marina is in great shape compared, if we go around and compare our marina to other marinas. But I don't think that's where we should be. We, I was talking to Teri and she pointed out that we've made a capital investment here, starting 30-plus years ago, and we expect a good return on our investment. And that's very reasonable. I feel the same way about my building. I dumped a ton of money in it 10 years ago to keep it on its feet. And I feel we're in that kind of a juncture now. And I think it's an ongoing thing, of course, maintenance, taking care of your car, putting air in the tires, et cetera. And these things like the spalling is something that's very obvious to me and anybody that I see, I've seen buildings fall down because of just this sort of element. And I think it's very, very important to be addressed on an ongoing basis. So what I'm trying to do is just reiterate and reinforce what Ted's doing and what he's bringing up. I think one of the issues is they're understaffed. I see boats that are very bad shape, really terrible derelict boats down there that I know some of them, I know some of them are not paying rent. We had a Cliffs old motorboat down there sink and we had to pay to have it raised. I'm sure you people are aware of that. But it's still down there. It's still not paying rent and still really a bad piece of garbage. And before Ted came here, I guess it was about 12, 12 years ago, 12, 14 years ago when our previous harbor master left, the chief of police took over and we did a major house cleaning down at the harbor. Got rid of a lot of liverboards, crap cars and trucks in the parking lot, got rid of a lot of boats that were underinsured and in terrible shape. We're getting some of that back now. And I asked Susie one time, I says, "Well, don't your insurance requirements, like I have to have insurance on my boat, isn't that a sort of a precursor and enforcement element?" So if the insurance lapses, she goes, "There's just not enough hours in the day to evaluate all the, what is it, 480, 580 slips if all their insurance and policies are enforced at this moment." And then when it comes to people not paying their rent, you send them a notice, you send them another notice and then that adds up and then different boats and it becomes a major time consumer for running the office. I think the marina is understaffed, both in the office and out on the docks. And it's, I think it's vital that we keep the marina in top shape, not compare it to Oyster Point. Oyster Point has always been an older marina and it's always shown that it's an older marina. We're not. And we don't have the wear and tear that Oyster Point has either, you know, the commercial traffic and the boat ramps and the gas and fuel docks and all the external stuff that goes on over there. So it's a different dynamic as well. And it gets a hell of a lot more use because of that. I agree that we don't need a launch ramp for motorized boats because it adds up a whole bunch of other stuff. Fish cleaning, upward motors and the oil in the water, et cetera. But having boats sink right in their slip because they're just neglected and walked away from, I think that's something where we need to address that. There's a number of boats. I took some pictures on Saturday and I was going to bring them and I left them at home tonight because I was busy practicing my little speech. But there's at least a dozen boats down there that shouldn't be down there. The Sacred Cow, the Sea Scout boats are great examples of that. It's the worst boat in the whole marina is the Sea Scout boat. It's just, it's coming up, literally coming apart. And it hasn't had a Sea Scout on it for over 10 years. And I think it's a great benefit that we offered this to the Sea Scouts, to encourage kids, to encourage, this is very, very positive things. But at some point, the he show remain unnamed dropped the ball and be having responsibility for it and to getting that derelict out of there. And it's now fallen to us. So here's an example of not having the clerical back ability, enough clerical ability to maintain vigilance with that sort of thing. And that brings down the level of the marina just walking around. That was a big thrust of that cleanup 12 years ago. It was just the crappy boats, the derelict boats. And, you know, we can refresh that issue as well. I think it wouldn't be a bad time. I know it's tough budgetary to get rid of boats that once, once you, when somebody's behind on their payments, you've got to start sending them notices over and over and over again. And then you've got to start the lean process and then enforce the lean and then have a lean sale and it's totally time consuming. It's not a, it's not a moneymaker. It takes time away from Ted and Susie both to do that. He can't put these reports together if he's out there trying to send lean notices.
Well, you know, Ted actually has addressed the council on those boats that, you know, haven't been paying their bills and trying to get boats out of the marina.
Again, I'm not criticizing Ted. I'm reinforcing some of the things that I as a boater and a Brisbane resident and a supporter of the marina, I'm just reinforcing these things from my perspective. You walk up and down those docks, you can see spots where you can trip easily. You can see concrete where you're just looking at bare rebar. You see boats that are, have this much bird poop on them and there's no hatches in them so they're open to the elements. These are, these are dead boats. There's lots of dead boats down there. Whether or not they're paying, I don't know. It's, you know, that's not my bailiwick, of course. But I just want to reinforce it. Ted needs more support and so does Susie from that element. And, you know, you were talking about the maintenance, the electrical issues. Teri said, asked the question about if low voltage is a challenge. Well, it is a challenge for electric motors. Electric motors such as bilge pumps hate low voltage. They'll burn up in very short time. So a boat that has some, say a bilge pump that goes on and off, cycles on and off, it could quickly burn up a bilge pump and then you get the possibility of other boats sinking. So far as the electrical radiation into the water, some marinas are notorious for being hot. And when they're hot, your propellers start to change color, your zincs burn up really fast. And in the spot where I am now, I've got two propellers that are 22 feet apart. And one of them is closer to the transformer and the one over there, I just, the diver just, he called me two weeks ago and he goes, "Hey, man, the port zinc is gone." And the one on the starboard side is it's still in good shape. And it's 140 bucks for me to change those zincs. So I changed the zincs, of course, because I got to protect the boat and the propellers. I have no electrical system that reaches the water in my boat. I have solar on the boat and it's all 12 volt. I've never plugged anything into the dock. I don't have to. So I'm really independent from the electrical grid. And like, as I said, different marinas have different elements of voltage go in the water. Well, we're paying for that voltage. We're paying electricity to go out there and dissipate into the docks and the water. That comes right off the top. And monitoring is a challenge, as Ted pointed out, both for your equipment, which gradually degrades in some different levels here and there, just like occasionally a breaker in a house will blow up and nobody knows why. It just gets old and quits. Well, that kind of thing occurs with the electrical on the docks, of course, at some, you know, different rates. And then you've got to go, you have to consistently monitor it, you know, like once or twice a year, say, just take a dip here and there on the docks. Or if some of the people are complaining about their zincs, these are indicators that you've got to challenge. And that spurous electricity does start to degrade the equipment, like I say, the docks. And then maybe you can chase it down to boats. But also, our docks have got a lot of conduit that run, part of a couple of old systems that I guess are abandoned now, the old telephone system and the cable TV systems are still out there. And if you look underneath virtually any of the docks, you'll see plastic conduits dipping down into the water. And a lot of, a lot of people don't have any idea what they are. And there's several guys down there on the docks. You talked about volunteers. There are several guys down on the harbor that volunteer. And I've offered my services to Ted and Susie. If you need something, you can call me because I'm around and I'm often on the dock and, you know, something blows up or if you need a hand saving a boat or whatever, call, you know. And they do occasionally reach out to some of the more consistent guys down there. So that is a resource. But for us to go down there and start painting docks and stuff like that, we're going to have hands full keeping the boats intact, for one thing. But volunteers for short things, when you need a couple extra hands, where if you had two guys working there and there's nobody, none of the part-timers are there and Susie's by herself and there's a dock coming loose or a boat coming loose, there's a number of us that'll run down there. In fact, I guess about two or three months ago, I was at the yacht club in the morning for one of the breakfasts and some of the guys were saying, "Hey, yesterday a cleat pulled out of the dock and a sailboat went up against a powerboat." And I went, "Whoa." So I took off, went down there and some guys had secured the boat already. It was a fairly small sailboat on dock one in a big slip and it had gone, these guys had tied it back up with the rope that was still on the cleat. So the boat on one end is tied and the cleat is dangling there with two bolts and it's tied off on the dock. And the cleat is suspended in the middle of the rope. So I climbed on the guy's boat and I found a couple more lines and I doubled up the lines on different cleats just in case. So there's an example of, another example of maintenance that, you know, like Ted was saying, the docks start to get loose and things like that. So again, I'm just reinforcing then, I think, which is a real necessity there. If there'd have been a full-size sailboat in that slip and it had gone into that powerboat, it would have ate the powerboat. They slide up and down next to each other and they really don't like that. One will eat the other, definitely. As it is, it probably only did a couple thousand dollars worth of damage to this side of the guy's boat. I'll have to haul and ferret and paint it and I don't know where that is. But I just want to reinforce the need for the full picture of maintenance here. You know, the marina produces enough cash to take care of itself and we need to preserve that. I think that's really important.
Yeah, we're going to be talking about that now.
Yeah. I have no doubt you've heard all these things before, but I'm just, you know, walking around and I knew this was a focus on the marina and I thought I'd bring my thoughts, as I said. And I'm sure you've talked about the paddle wheeler down there. Well, one of the issues I've gone to Ted with a bunch of times is the security or lack of security on Sundays. Those guys will often latch the gate open and it's open all day long. And when they're rocking and rolling down there on Sunday afternoons, as I said, I think I said before that I've been out something like 16 out of the last 18 Sundays. So I come in there in the afternoon. The first time they were open down there, when I came in the marina, there was like 10 people down on the pirate boat, walking around on the deck and taking pictures and all that. And these are this guy's clients on somebody else's boat. Now, if somebody took a header off one of those boats, we know there'd be, everybody would sue and everybody. The marina, the boat owner, the paddle wheeler, you, Ted, anybody else in the room. And of course, the deep pockets, it'll end up being right here in this room. It'll come right out of, you know, a settlement would be a great liability to Brisbane. And Ted talked to the guy and the guy, I don't know if he stonewalled him or he just says, "Well, I don't have the manpower for that. But we've got security gates down there and we've gone to a lot of trouble and expense to have these electronic security gates and they can monitor who comes and goes." Well, those things, that gate is wide open for as long as that guy's is operating on Sundays. And I think it's a drag that, the guy should have somebody on each finger so that the guests come down, go on the boat, and then when they leave, go off the boat, not be free to roam the docks. I think that's an invitation for, well, anything you can think of, theft, liability, whatever. People that, "These gals are wearing five-inch-high heels. They shouldn't be walking up and down those docks." Guarantee. Those two things don't mix at all. Stick one of those heels between one of the cracks, woo-hoo. So, and that guy's music is terrific, terrific. I'm about 100 yards from him down on the other finger of dock one. When he's rocking, when I'm in my boat, I can't have a stereo on or anything. It's just overwhelming. It vibrates the cabinetry in my boat 100 yards away. It's a little stiff. If I was next to that guy, I'd be at every meeting down here raising hell. So I don't know if he fits in with us or not. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, how about this, you presented, I mean, I mean, you've presented a lot of, a lot of items. Why don't we let Ted, you know, respond to some of those things that...
Well, it's no point going back and forth. You know, he's doing his best and I don't know the whole picture. I'm just, I'm just an observer here. I'm not, I didn't come down to criticize anything. I'm just bringing to the council a yachter's perspective on this stuff.
No, I appreciate it.
And maybe it's making good money and it's, these are just little bumps that need to be ironed out. I don't know. I just know what I'm seeing. And I just felt it was appropriate to come down and yak it up, yak it up with you guys a little bit.
No, that's good.
Reinforce the fact that we need staff down there for policing these crappy boats. But there's a, there's four, I think four or five powerboats over there on dock two that I'm sure a couple of them aren't paying any slip fees. The one that sunk for sure. And that dock is pretty full, which means those slips are in demand. Dock one has bigger slips and there's some empties over there. But when you go on dock two, there's hardly any empties because those boats, I mean, are in slips that have demand for them. So if we got rid of those junk boats, we could rent them to somebody. And that, that'd be a benefit. That would help provide extra staff for Susie and Ted. So I think I'll wind it up with that. I want to thank you all for listening to me and I hope I haven't stepped on toes. I didn't, like I say, I'm not here to criticize anybody. I want to thank the council for all the time you guys put in. I know it's, a lot of times it's a thankless job, but you guys do a great job for propelling and maintaining our city and keeping a good direction. And I appreciate each and every one of you. And I feel the same way about the staff of Brisbane. They work hard and they walk around with targets on their back all the time, you know. They don't hear the accolades very often, but they hear all the criticisms. And I am not here to criticize. I appreciate what the staff does as well. They work hard, they do their job, and we have a great city as proof of that. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, Ted included. I don't mean to criticize anybody, so keep going, keep up the good work.
Okay.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ted, you want to just, you know, I know you talked about the boats that are kind of despair and how you've been trying to deal with that.
Yeah, I'm in the process of spending $100,000 this year to get rid of derelict vessels. We've got $75,000 next year to get rid of derelict vessels. A couple of the boats Wayne alluded to are on our list. On the electrolysis issue, about a year ago, we discontinued all the telephone lines and put it in the newsletter that there's no hardwired telephone lines anymore because they were improperly wired to begin with and we knew that they were a source of electrolysis. So the lines remain, but they're not connected to anything. There's no electricity going through them. They're all dead. So we did that a year or so ago, to the disdain of some of the boaters that really didn't want to go wireless on us. But we had to do it because I recognized that it was a problem. And so those wires are no longer active. And I can't remember the other issues.
Yeah, I was talking about the scout.
Oh, the security. The Spirit Sacramento, two weeks ago hired a retired sheriff's officer to be their security and they are stationed at the gate, they are stationed at the foot of the dock and they're stationed at the boat. And per his charter agreement with us, nobody's allowed to wander to the docks. They can wander to the parking lots all they want, but anytime they're on the other side of the lock gate, they either have to be aboard the boat or exiting or transiting onto the vessel. That's, that's clear.
What is our recourse, I guess, call it, when people do wander to the docks? Maybe from what Wayne observed, if, you know, people are and stuff like that.
Well, if that occurs, he's in violation of his contract and he's been put on notice that if he's in violation of his contract and we cancel his contract, he no longer does charter businesses. And then the next step would be to revoke his slip license agreement.
Okay.
I have a question. The Sea Scout boats, that, what I'm concerned about with the comment that was made, if it's literally, it's falling apart, it's a major liability, even though it belongs to Sea Scout, you know, as he said, we go to the deep pocket. So what, how are we handling this?
That one will be going away in the next month. We have a new Sea Scout troop that will be coming before the council and they're going to be bringing in two sailboats. They're getting rid of the... They're getting rid of the four boats. They've actually gotten rid of two boats already. They take them to the Army Corps of Engineers in Sausalito and the Army Corps of Engineers at no cost to them, removes them out of the water and destroys them. The powerboat is a little bit more different because it's so much bigger. Mark Marzano from the Pacific Inner Scout Skyline Council will be taking the 40-footer away with a bigger boat later on this month. When we get all those berths open, I told the new Sea Scout commander that they can bring in two sailboats. They have gone to the Lions Club, and they've gone to the yacht club, and they've gone to the schools here, and they've requested interest in providing another Sea Scout ship to Brisbane for Brisbane kids. And you will be getting a staff report at some future point here, asking for this new Sea Scout ship to be established in Brisbane Marina and to allow them to have basically two berths. So that will be coming forward in the near future.
Thank you.